Okay, good morning everybody and welcome to today's cabinet meeting. Everybody on the Cabinet has received copies of all of the reports and been able to read them and see them. We're joined today by council officers who are all present. We've received one apology from Jeanette McLaughlin, the City Solicitor. Gary Wermold is here to represent Jeanette. Declarations of interest have all been declared, so we move on to the minutes of the last meeting, which is the 9th of October, and they're on pages 20, sorry, 1 to 9 on your agenda. So any comments or observations around those minutes? Or can we agree them as a true record? As usual, if I don't hear, then I'll accept that they're agreed as a true record. Okay, so we can then move on then to item 3 on the agenda, which is an item around mail reports that are not to be considered today. So we then move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item 4, which is mail recommendations. We have six public recommendations to consider today. And they're all on the main agenda. We do have supplementary agendas as well. So the first item on today's agenda in terms of public recommendations is item A, which is the acceptance of funds from Liverpool City Region Growth Platform for local growth hubs. So it's a recommendation that just basically asks us to accept 83,334 of funding to deliver the local growth hub, providing business support. I think it's a pretty straightforward, pretty positive story. I don't know whether Barbara, you've got any comments you would like to make?
I'd just like to say what you said, it's family increase because unemployment's going up and it is really welcome. It's also good to see us working in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, so can we agree that recommendation as set out in the report, please? Okay, so if we move on then to item B, which is the Kickstart Programme, and that's on pages 16 to 26 of your agenda, and it's just seeking approval to participate in the government's Kickstart Programme, subject to confirmation from government. This will deliver round about 400 employment placements and run between now and December 2021. Again, Barbara, any comments you want to make on the Kickstart Programme?
Yes, thanks Mayor. This is really welcome because so far this is our young people. It's also a support for business and community groups, help them grow capacity while young people learn the skills. And you know, what's not to like about this? It's really welcome.
Yeah, yeah, couldn't agree more, especially for youth, for young people in terms of youth unemployment, the problems that we're facing, you know, in terms of post-COVID. It's going to be crucially important and even during now, the present COVID crisis as well. So no, so can we all agree that recommendation, please? Okay, and so we move on then to item C, which is the Move On Arrangements for Temporary Accommodation. And this, just basically, this recommendation forms part of our ongoing response to COVID and specifically in relation to our support for homeless people. This will continue the current suspension of choice-based lettings that we normally have until January. So then, so that basically means that we can match properties to households needed to move them on from temporary accommodations. It's been a huge success, Barry. I don't know whether you want to make a few comments. I know Lenny was involved in this from the outset, but if you want to make any comments on this?
Yeah, I think, well, I think we need to recognise the work that Lenny's put in to for achieving this, I think. And there's two things I take from it. One is that what we're designing is a completely new approach to how we respond and support people who have found themselves without a home and living in a homeless situation, without putting them into large hostels. It gives people a real opportunity and a platform to get their lives straight. And I think we're showing the way forward with that. I think it's fantastic. And I think the second thing as well is it just shows that what we can do as a council in coordinating, bringing the housing associations together to focus on achieving particular housing needs, to address particular housing needs. And in that, that potential, something that obviously we build on, addressing all the housing needs as we go, obviously go forwards. But I think it's absolutely the right thing for us to do.
Okay, okay, no, good, good comments. And yet, as I said, I know, you know, across the departments of the council, so in Martin's team and Blanty, as well as, you know, in terms of housing, Darren, other plucking this. And so you're right to point out about Lenny's contribution and yours. And I think it's also something that should be used or exemplified as a model of good practice for others to follow. So I think what we've done and how we've approached it has been something that I think is not only innovative, but I think is also, you know, shows our desire to support and help those most in need, especially now during the COVID period, but also in the winter months as well, moving forward. So again, can we agree that recommendation then as set out within the report? Okay, so I think if we move on then to item D, which is the Baltic Triangle SRF Public Consultation Feedback and Endorsements of the Final Document. It's quite a meaty report and document, but it's got some great graphics in there and stuff and lots of information. And it's on pages 31 to 227 of your report. And it's basically the recommendation within the report is actually sets out a summary of the representations that we received, which was consulted on between February of this year, 17th of February and the 3rd of April. So it's noted in the comments, the consultation comments, and are proposed that we include these in the final version of the SRF, which accompanies the report. And let's just, you know, approve the report. I don't know whether any cabinet members at all have any comments, given that it's a Strategic Regeneration Framework document that covers that particular part of the city, the Baltic quarter. If anybody's got any comments, just speak out, Bob.
Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a brilliant plan in that it kind of brings some coherence to that whole section of the city and connects it from, obviously from up a Parliament Street right the way through into the city centre with, I think that reflects the, what's been driving the growth in that area, which is creative, creative and digital businesses and the creatives that have helped to get that area moving again. And then provides a balance of, you know, with residential, have the residential structure of the area with all the open spaces and the cycle lanes and that, that reflect all that sort of public realm in that area. I think that would be, again, as it links up with some of the other plans that we've got going further up from town up towards Mount Pleasant and up that way. We're providing a whole network of, with pedestrian sites, with cycling, with public spaces where people can relax and enjoy, nice cafes, there's business opportunities, nice places for people to live. And I think that that is just all transforming the city centre.
Okay, well, if we then agree with those comments, which I'm sure we do, can we all agree that that report and the Strategic Regeneration Framework document for the Baltic? So can we all agree the recommendations within that report, please? Okay, so we move on then to item J, which is our Education Improvement Plan for Liverpool. And basically, this is a recommendation that is, you know, we're asked to approve a plan that we have for Liverpool, which is about developing new ways of working and tackling inequalities and providing a stronger focus on prevention and early help. So I don't know whether Barbara or anybody wants to make any comments on this particular cause?
Yes, thank you Mayor. I'd like to thank you, Mayor Anderson, and Chief Executive because of the budget that we've spent for, yes, again, showing children are at the forefront of everything we do and investing in the future and the next generation. I'd also like to thank the Director of Education, who's worked very hard since his appointment in June. So thanks to everybody who's worked hard on this, but this really is the start of doing things slightly differently or greatly differently in the city to improve the educational outcomes for all our children and young people. So it's very welcome.
Okay, thanks for that, Barbara, and we appreciate the comment. So can we approve the Education Improvement Plan for Liverpool? Pages 228, 247 on your report, is that recommendation agreed? Okay, that's great. So we move on then to item F, which is the Extension of the ICT Framework Agreement. And this is on 248 to 253 of the report, your cabinet report. And it's a recommendation that seeks approval for a further six-month, 1 million extension of the ICT framework. I think it's, again, pretty straightforward. It's pretty clear why we need to do it. It's allowing sufficient time for the procurement process to be undertaken in light of the impact of COVID-19 on service delivery. So do cabinet members have any comments on it? No? Okay, all right. Well, if we then move on and agree that recommendation, but move on then to our supplementary agenda. So we now have two additional reports to consider, which were published yesterday in a supplementary agenda. Both of these reports are brought forward as part of our ongoing response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And in light of that, in the light of the agency, both reports, the chairs of the relevant select committees have been consulted and agreed that the call-in shouldn't apply. And I think the first one is the Liverpool Hackney Carriage and Private Hire Grant. And basically, it's a recommendation that seeks approval for us to create a grant fund to support taxi drivers. The fund will be open to all taxi drivers, hackney and private hire, who hold a badge or a plate that's been licensed by Liverpool City Council this year. And the grant will be equivalent to the amount the driver has paid to secure the badge or plate to be licensed. Look, let's just be clear that, you know, the funding that we've received from government is about business support. Car drivers have been hit really hard within the city. This is a very, very tiny amount of money, big in the scale of the budget that challenges that we face, a massive amount of money that we've got to find. However, in terms of what they've lost and how hard they've been hit, it is a very, very small amount of money. It really is. But it suggests, it suggests you to say that, you know, we understand how hard you've been hit and therefore we don't expect you to pay for a licence fee and a plate fee, when at the end of the day, you haven't been able to operate normally and bring in the wages, the revenue that you need to operate as a small business. So we hope that they'll be able to take advantage of the government's announcements yesterday. But this, in some small way, is a gesture on behalf of the council to actually say that we support you and we, you know, we understand the challenges that you face. So I don't know whether any of the cabinet members have any comments to make on this?
Joe?
Yeah.
I'd just come in because I just really want to say thank you personally to you for making this happen. As you've mentioned, it's only quite right that we support taxis who have been significantly impacted. So I very do welcome this report and the creation of this grant to support them during this time.
Thanks, thanks Sharon. And we have been working with United Union, as you know, with Tommy McIntyre, United Union, who represents the taxi drivers. We've been working closely with them and Darren Hardy's been leading on this for us and working with the CI as well to make sure that we got some of the funding that we negotiated with government that's come through, to make sure that some of that comes towards us and we're topping it up. So yeah, as I say, Sha, thanks for that, but it is just a gesture. It's a small amount, but at least it shows solidarity and support with them. So, you know, I think it's, it's good. Okay, we move on then to one partially exempt report. And I think, you know, we'll consider the one fair, the partially exempt recommendation.
Apologies, Mayor Anderson, just to intervene briefly, you do have one additional public recommendation.
Oh, sorry, the PPE, okay, sorry Mike, thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, sorry, we have item H, which again is another late, late item. It's the PPE, it's on your report, the supplementary 329. It's a recommendation that basically is asking us to update in relation to the procurement of PPE in relation to COVID-19. It's approval is sought from Cabinet for the ongoing procurement arrangements for the coming year, as well of the establishment of a framework for sourcing PPE supplies moving forward, because we think we'll need them. Paul, councillor Blant, do you want to make any comments on this?
Thanks Mayor, yes. I think this report, first of all, recognises the work that took place in the spring of this year to ensure that our local providers, both inside the council, but also our providers of care in the residential and domiciliary sector, were given proper PPE. And it wasn't just a case of making sure that the spend took place, but it was making sure that they had the guarantees that the PPE that was being sourced was proper provenance. And people will recall that in the previous first wave, that there were multiple occasions on which organisations and then sometimes, some occasions, countries ended up buying PPE that was ultimately shown to be unsafe. And the work of our procurement team has been exemplary, along with the work of the social care team, in making sure that none of our social care providers in the first wave ran out of PPE. Everybody, along with the NHS, was mutually supporting each other. I really welcome this report because it puts, it recognises that previous action and it puts on a sound footing an allocation to make sure that in the next financial year, that the council has an allocation to make sure that it can purchase the necessary PPE for our care providers, both in-house council care providers and the external support that's necessary to make sure that the care system properly is supported. So I really welcome this report and I also thank the council for getting it on the agenda so quickly, given the time constraints involved.
Okay, thanks for those comments, Paul, welcome. So given Paul's comments and the sorts of urgency of it, can we agree that recommendation, please, as set out within the report? Okay, and so now if we go back to the one partially exempt report, and this is the Adult Services and Health Procurement Plan. And again, it's only, basically it's partly exempt. So unless cabinet members have any questions, then we'll consider it in public now. So, and has got, anybody got any questions that we need to debate and discuss? I think everybody's clear that we support and I think everybody's seen that. So if we, if we move on then, so the recommendation seeks our approval for a range of procurements as detailed in the report relating to not just services for carers and young carers, but also services for rough sleepers. So again, Paul, do you want to make any, any comments on this agenda item?
Thanks, thanks Mayor. This item makes sure that all the relevant procurement processes are lined up and the formalities comply to it. It's, it's, in some ways, you might see it as an administrative exercise, but it's also a key, important part of our processes to make sure we get the right provision at the right time for the right cost to protect city council taxpayers. So I welcome this report and would recommend it to the cabinet.
Okay, thanks for that, Paul. So can we agree that recommendation, please? Okay, thank you. And then, so we have no further reports, such as item agendas five and six, none to consider then. So if we move on then swiftly to the Chief Financial Officer's report. So we've got two reports, which is updating us on our financial position. And the first one is the Revenue Monitor Position. So it's item A on the agenda, starts on pages 254 to 283 on your agenda. And it just sets out the revenue forecast as positioned at month five, really. So Mel, do you want to talk to us about the revenue position? Just briefly give us an update on that?
Yeah, sure. So the report sets out the financial position to month five being 15.7 million overspend. Just so members are aware, that 15.7 is split, nearly 13 million pound of that is directly related to COVID-19 expenditure with three million, just under 3 million, 12.7 is our underlying financial position. So for month five, for an authority of our size, to be looking at 12.7 as an underlying overspend is a very good position and a well-managed position.
Yeah, I think that clearly sets out within the report, Mel. And it is a fact that the, that, you know, without all the pressures that we faced and dealt with within COVID, that 3 million wouldn't be 3 million either, that's for sure. But yeah, I think it's clear to point out that the pressures that were under are, you know, COVID-related. And, you know, we've got to make sure that we keep arguing and fighting for more funding from the government to actually help us pay for that shortfall. So any comments on the Revenue Monitor, month five, from cabinet members? I think we'll have a probably a cabinet meeting next week to discuss in detail the finances as well. And I'll be speaking to leaders later on this morning to discuss in detail where we are. So any comments from anybody on the Revenue Monitor? No, okay, so if we move on then to item B, which is the Capital Programme Monitor. And again, similarly, month five usually follows our Capital Programme Monitor. So it's just an update into where we are with the capital programme for this financial year. Again, Mel, do you want to, do you want to sort of give us an update on that?
The report sets out the current capital position and details includes the previous cabinet reports that have gone forward to bring additions into the programme. The main move on the programme is the Cruisiner Terminal and the re-profiling of that expenditure and the reduction overall of a million pound.
Okay. Any comments from anybody? I said, I know it's a junky piece of work, but it's nevertheless important and especially as we look to the capitalisation possibilities moving forward to understand the capital programme. So can we just note the recommendations within it, which is to just continue in the way we are? And if we all do, then we will move on. Okay, so thank you for that. So we move on, item eight. We have no agenda item for item eight. So just move on to some comments from me. I think it's obviously important to talk about the current situation in terms of Liverpool being in tier three. As you know, we entered into dialogue with the government and the government advised us that they were placing Liverpool into tier three. And the bottom line is, as we've been explaining to people over the last week or so, we very, very short notice, we were told to have this discussion with central government, with the Number 10 team, and they told us what was going to be in tier three, which they led to slated for, as we all know, last week. And, you know, the consequences of that were there for everybody to see. You'll also know, of course, that the funding formula that central government gave out for tier three authorities at the time was eight pound per head to enable us to do track and trace systems better, working with armed forces personnel who have expertise in logistics and supporting them, working with our public health teams and others. That's actually ongoing and happening. And then, you know, the funding that we received to support businesses, round about 30 wall has been up as well. But the bottom line is though, the funding formula that they were using is exactly the same funding formula based on per capita, and that's gone to Lancashire. And of course, now Greater Manchester are going into tier three today and others to follow as well. So we can clearly see that the government's red line on the fail-o scheme and support for businesses was going to stay the same, although there was further announcements yesterday. What is absolutely clear to me is that governments are just, you know, doing this on the hoof. They are responding always, always to pressure from people. So the people that argued rightly because of the gyms here in Liverpool being forced to close and yet were allowed to open elsewhere across the country, those that went into tier three, was just absurd. It was just absolutely stupidity and shows the disconnect between common sense and government policymakers, because quite frankly, how can you argue that it is in Southport, where you can go a couple of hundred yards and go into Lancashire and use a gym in Lancashire and then move back into the city region in terms of into Southport? It was just bizarre, just absolutely nonsensical. And to have, you know, a situation where people could ask the question, what's the difference between people using gyms in Liverpool and people using gyms, you know, elsewhere, whether it's in the Sheffield region, the Manchester region, the Lancashire region? It just was stupid. So the pressure that everybody put on government to change, including the public here in Liverpool and across the city region, I think helped them change their mind. But that sums up really the response by this government in terms of dealing with it. They make statements, they come to the lecter and they tell people what they're going to do. And then they change their mind because of pressure and people pointing out that it's not really working. But look, the reality is, is that on the situation of moving into tier three, it was always, always going to be something that we had to do because of the situation facing us currently, where COVID is out of control. We said this ago and it still applies today. And what's happening out there? And yet, we, you know, we still don't understand how, for instance, this, you know, number that we are at today, and there's round about, from our point of view, 3,000 infections as we speak within the city and more across the region, how that is going to impact on us in terms of the city. But what we do know is it's already impacting on our hospitals and it is a cause for concern. And we share the pain and the anxiety and the stress, both physically and mentally, that our hospitals are under. There's been 61 deaths in the last seven days here in Liverpool. One of them, as everybody knows, was my brother, who was devastatingly took One of them, as everybody knows, was my brother, who was devastatingly took from me six weeks after I lost my other brother. And the fact is, is that the following day, when I received the phone call from the hospital at quarter eleven at night telling me that Bill had passed away from COVID nineteen, the following day, there were demonstrations in our city from people telling us that it doesn't exist, that it's a figment of our imagination. Well, you know, the sixty one people that have died in the last week of COVID nineteen, that's not a figment. The pain that I'm feeling and my sister-in-law is feeling and Bill's son is feeling is not a figment of anybody's imagination. It's real. It's there. I can touch it. I feel it every single day. So we have to work together. We have to stand by each other. We have to stop blaming each other. And we have to try to work with our health services professionals, everybody that works in the hospitals to actually bring this virus back under control. That's the thing that unites us all, and it should unite us all. Recognising that COVID nineteen is the enemy. It is that disease that is the enemy, the silent enemy of us all, not each other. So if we stick together as we've battled away to get government to give us more funding and also continue to battle with government to give us more funding, but also to change the stupidity of some of the rules like the gyms, then we've got a chance, a good chance of coming through this, sticking together. I think from my point of view, I just would like to say a big thank you to all my cabinet colleagues, councillor colleagues, all the officers of the council for your cards, flowers, warm words and support. And also through this medium to say thanks to the public of the city who have also rallied around on what has been a difficult time to say the least. But I appreciate it and thank you for that. Just a couple of things that we are still working through. You've heard us talking about the taxis and how we're supporting taxis. You know, one of the things that we as a cabinet and all of my colleagues, councillor colleagues in the administration, need no reminding of, is our pledge when we were elected was to make sure that we had a platform that run parallel. One was to grow our city's economy and to create wealth and jobs and opportunities through our inclusive growth programmes. And the other was to stand by and support people, people that needed us most and people that needed our support and help. And it's interesting that, you know, and I'd like to just sort of pay tribute to our local media state, you know, particularly the Echo that has highlighted, you know, the challenges and the problems that the people of the city face and the city region face. There's a great story in the Echo today about child poverty. I'd ask everybody to read it. And basically, what is highlighting it is that seventy percent in some areas of our city are children are in poverty. And I know, you know, we know that, and in particular, you know, Barbara, Liz, Lily, people who work at the coalface, people who work alongside, people know and see and touch and feel that every single day. And we do too. Seventy percent of communities in this city, whether it's in South Liverpool and Speakeen, Garston, the Dingle, Princess Park, North Liverpool, County Warbreak, Anfield, Breckfield, Tubro, areas of the city where poverty levels and children going hungry is round about seventy percent. So as we come to the half term break, we'll see, you know, Marcus Rashford and his campaign about maintaining the school vouchers for our children who receive free school meals as we enter into half term. And that's been something that's worried not just me, but I know all of you, Steve Reddy and Barbara and all of us. It's been worrying for us because we know, realise those figures that have been revealed that seventy percent of our children are living in hunger and poverty in some of the poorest parts of the city. So it's always upon us to see how and what we can do to help people. And so today, we're saying loud and clear that we'll stand by those kids who are receiving free school meals. So we will extend our school voucher system to apply to this half term starting next week to make sure that those who need it, twenty thousand children in Liverpool who are receiving free school meals will get the vouchers that support and help their parents to buy food, to look after them during that break. We know, again, it's not huge amounts, but at least it gives comfort to us to know that there'll be extra funding and money going into particular families who need our support and help to actually pay for food to put on the table during half term. So I think, you know, from my point of view, times are really tough for us as we go through the budget making process. But we'll never ever lose sight of how tough it is for families out there. We'll never ever lose sight of how hard it is for people struggling to make ends meet. And that's what we are here for. That's what we are about. It is about protecting and supporting people. So I'm proud to make that announcement backed by all of you, supported by all of you, and I'm sure supported by every councillor on Liverpool City Council. So thanks, Steve Reddy and Mel as well for finding the money for me. Because she's a star when I put the pressure on her, which I often do every, almost every hour, to find money for us. So so I think from me, the fight goes on. It's, you know, I just want to end by saying as well that, you know, we did have and have had in the past when the figures and the data and the information about COVID patients and the high level infections in our hospitals, we had every Thursday the clap for carers. And I think, you know, we need to remember that even though we are not actually doing clap for carers anymore, that we shouldn't forget those that are on the front line every single day. And I can't stress enough to people who talk about this not being a serious problem or challenges for us. The reality is, is that those people working on the front line are under enormous strain of physical and mental. And, you know, if you looked and relook and retweet and put out on social media and if you look at Jen's comments today, I think we'll share them, Martin, Farren and Paul, where she talks about what she filmed in the Royal. It's a really powerful message about how under pressure our hospitals are. So let's remember all of them and the great work that they do. So any comments from anybody? Anybody want to make any comments? Okay. Okay, well, all right. Well, look, as I said, that ends the announcements, my announcements. So please try, stay safe and have a good weekend. And I shall speak to you all soon. Okay, so take care. Bye. Bye bye.